Board of Trustees Regular Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, April the 16th, 2024, 6:00 P. M. We are here at the District Office and I welcome you all and thank you for coming. At this time, I will call our meeting to order. And also, I will recognize Theodore Rowe, Batesburg Leesville High School J R O T C Cadet, and Andrew Hall, Batesburg Leesville High School F C A President, who will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and pray.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you today and we thank you for the grace that has brought us here, not only the grace of your Son, Jesus Christ, but the grace that made the sun rise on Batesburg Leesville this morning. Lord, important decisions will be made today. And so, we ask you for wisdom, God, because you are the source. Lord, and you will help guide us if we ask. Lord, bless this evening tonight and may we carry out your will. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you both for taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us tonight. At this time, we will move on to item 1.4, Approval of the Agenda. And without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. Agenda is approved. Also, 1.5, Approval of Minutes from the March 12th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Without objection, we will approve those as presented in your packet. Minutes are approved. 2.0 Consent Items, 2.1 Financial Report with Ms. Roden.
Hello, good evening. Got your statements in your packet for the month of March. On the cash balance analysis, something worth pointing out this month is the nursing grant. We received a grant through DHEC that allowed us to have a nursing room assistant. And we were notified this past week that we could reapply and for next fiscal year. So, we're going to get that paperwork completed and get that taken care of. Did you have any particular questions about the month of March? The financials that were in your packet? Okay. Oh, I want to remind everyone, next Tuesday is our work session.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we will move on to 2.2 Superintendent's Report with Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. We had another successful enrichment camp for this spring. It was a huge success. We had 292 students that attended. We had 37 certified staff, 14 non-certified staff that all gave their time and worked the enrichment sessions. And again, some of the highlights were cooking and literature, historical mysteries, frontier life, metal detecting, podcasting, and multiple sports activities. I just want to thank all of our staff, our teachers, our assistants, our bus drivers, food service nurses, and all our administrators that made this a successful event. And especially want to thank Jennifer Richardson and Brantley Bazzard again, who coordinated the events and have done an excellent job. And they said that they would continue for the next five years doing this. So, we just want to thank them for doing that. Just a little bit about the construction, some of the things that have occurred in the last month. I don't know if I've ever pointed out at the primary school, there are eight phases of construction there. And each phase has its own color code. But consequently, the color codes don't match the colors of the halls. So, you really have to have a cross-reference matrix to tell which one is which. But in the last month, Phase Four, which is the red hall, it was completed and it's been turned back over to our students and staff. So, they're occupying it now. Phase Five, which is the green hall and the high school weight room, will have a final inspection on April the 30th. So, that's fast approaching. Phase Six, which is the blue hall, will begin on May 6th or maybe even a little sooner, but I think it will be May 6th. So, that will begin then. Now, Phase Seven and Eight, which are the yellow hall and the purple hall, are slated to begin. We're in negotiation with them, trying to get them to speed that up a little bit. So, that will start soon after that and be completed somewhere around July 12th for the yellow hall, which is what we're asking, and the purple hall probably around July 19th. And then, once that's completed, those eight phases, then, just like the high school, all the halls at the primary school would have been gutted and completely rebuilt. So, we're excited and looking forward to that. As far as the gym, we have a final inspection on the gym schedule for May the 9th. Now, there'll still be some landscaping and some site work on the outside that will still need to be completed. But I was in there today and it looks great. It's a beautiful facility. Bleachers are all the way, are completely in. There are speakers everywhere hooking up the sound system. To quote, and I don't think I've quoted our sound person, but they said that the sound system will be so much better in the new gym than the old that it will make dust dance across the floor. So, I said, all I wanted to do is to make sure it aggravates the people my age and older. So, then we'll know it's good and loud. The high school Beta Club participated in the convention back in late winter. And we had 40 members that competed and attended the event and competed in a wide range of different activities, science, math, language arts, social studies, Spanish, agri-science, visual arts, and performing arts. Five of our students placed in various competitions. Raimi Davis, Lakin Brock, Jorge Torres, Callie Watson, Emma Shealy, and also Michaela Bar was recognized for her service this past year as the state vice president for the entire state of South Carolina. So, we're proud of their accomplishments. I hope you all were able to attend the high school production of Annie. It was a wonderful production. Again, you can't go wrong with theater producing a musical. It just adds another layer of success there. Then again, it was a great event. I'm just proud of all of our students and cast and crew that participated to make it such a great event. Our director, Ivy Munnerlin, and her assistant was Joy Haggard. Again, I hope you were able to attend. Our boys tennis team captured the region championship at the end of March. And just want to point out that this is the third year in a row that our boys tennis team have been the region champions. We have four seniors, Liam Truitt, Dylan Jordan, Hollis Roof, and Anthony Holmes. And it's been such a pleasure to watch them from freshmen to seniors, to be able, how they've gotten better each year. And obviously, three years in a row as the region champion, they're pretty good. Our middle school boys track and field team, we had two boys that were Lex Ten Champions, Mario Waters for the long jump, Bishop Sims for the discus. And we had one girls champion, Riya Etheridge for the discus. And speaking of presentations, our elementary school will be presenting the musical Beauty and the Beast on April the 27th. Obviously, it'll be at the Fine Arts Center. There are two shows, 11 and 3. And as always, I'm sure it will be well worth your while. It will be a stellar performance. Want to point out that the heart of the Panther Program is when we, is an event where we are able to provide of our athletes aged 14 and grades eight to 11 with a free cardiovascular screening through M U S C. That would be EKG and ultrasound, and that will occur on April the 30th and also on May the 1st. So, we're glad that we're one of the few school districts that's able to provide that for their student athletes. As I talked about this the other day, I apologize to the Clemson fans, but we were able to host just a chicken presentation at the primary school on March the 21st. And this is based on a book written by two USC football players. I know our Clemson people are saying they actually wrote a book, but they did. Langston Moore and Preston Thorne, who are, and Langston Moore was a former NFL football player as well. And they came and talked about the book, read the book, and talked to our students about, you know, the importance of literacy, good writing and speaking skills, and also the purpose is to empower children to be able to believe in themselves and to work hard. So, it was a great, great time with all of our students. They all got to attend. And I want to thank the Rotary Club, the PTO, and Vulcan Materials that financially supported this event and to make it possible. And it was coordinated by Amy Beaton-Bowden. It was a great time for all. I hate that Andrew Hall's already had to leave us, but he is part of our Stellar Archery Team. It's really a fledgling program, but we competed in the state tournament on March the 27th. We finished eight out of 15. Last year, our first year there, we were 15 out of 15. So, next year, we should be the state champion if they continue the same trend. But we had some individual results to be proud of. Andrew Hall, who finished third overall in the state and won a $1,500 scholarship, and Austin Shealy, who finished second in just the Bullseye Competition. So, again, we are proud of those. Charlene Ha and Todd Beaton-Bowden worked on a grant through the Dodge Diabetes LLC. And the purpose of this grant and working with them is that the Diabetes Association here will come in and work, give two 30-minute individual education sessions for all of our students in the district with type 1 or type 2 diabetes. So, hopefully supporting those students. And last but not least, our third and last Farm to Families event for the primary school will occur on Saturday, April the 27th, 2024. And that will be from 9:00 to 11:00. Have two other things that we want to point out, but I'm going to let those be talked about in our special recognition next.
Thank you. All right, and speaking of recognition, we will move on to 3.1. Our Batesburg Leesville High School Winter Guard received first place and Scholastic Regional A Champions at the Carolina Winner Ensemble Association Championships. And Ms. McKenzie Taylor, Director of Public Information and Community Relations, will tell us about that.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Trustees members. It is my privilege this evening to recognize our Batesburg Leesville High School Winter Guard members. They are present this evening, so I'll ask them just to come up here to the front so we can properly recognize you for your accomplishments. On Saturday, April the 6th, the BLHS Winter Guard achieved a first-place finish and were named the Scholastic Regional A Champions at the Carolina Winner Ensemble Association Championships. Now, there were 37 groups competing in their division. And those schools were from North Carolina and South Carolina, and they ranged in size from 1A to 5A. So, this is a huge accomplishment for our Winter Guard. And I would like to point out that we have students not only from Batesburg Leesville High School as a part of this group, but also Batesburg Leesville Middle School. So, let's give a round of applause to Brian Steele, Anna Marie Long, Isabella Kaufman, Destiny Smith, Carmen Dillon, Catherine Talibera, Christian Smith, and Daylin Blair. And this group is coached by Ms. Danisha Thompson. And this is the first time that our Winter Guard has achieved such an accomplishment since 2009. So, quite a big deal. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you, guys. And I did grab their picture outside before we got started with the meeting. So, we appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you.
All right, McKenzie, we will go on with item 3.2, the First Graduation Class of School Nursing Leadership Program by Kim Hendrix.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We are excited to recognize our very own District 3 nurse this evening, Ms. Kim Hendrix, who was part of the inaugural cohort of nurses that made up the state's first nursing leadership program. So, I'll invite Nurse Hendrix to come up here and join me. The South Carolina School Nursing Leadership Program is the state's first leadership program geared toward helping K-12 school nurses improve health services for students. And we know that Kim and her team here in Lexington III do a tremendous job of taking care of our students. This program offered in-person workshops where participating school nurses learned leadership skills, developed their own leadership styles, and they built confidence in addition to gaining a group of peers that they could network with throughout the year. We are just so proud of Kim. We're so proud of her being a part of this. If you remember correctly, Kim was named the 2023 South Carolina School Nurse Administrator of the Year last year. So, she is a tremendous representative for us in this field. Let's give her a round of applause. And I took her picture outside before the meeting as well. So, we're set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kim. Jennifer, any cards? All right, no cards. So, we will move on to item 5.0, Information 5.1, the presentation on iReady Transition with Ms. Bryant, Assistant Secretary General.
Good evening, y'all. Thank y'all for letting me present tonight. I want to tell you just a quick little story. When I was at I-3, the SCASA Conference last summer, I have a very good friend that I worked with for a number of years who does a similar role in another district. And she literally comes up to me. She had heard about my new job. And she comes up to me and grabs me by the hand and says, "Come with me." And she drags me to the iReady display and introduces me to a young lady named Jill Brady and says, "I want you to help her like you helped me because our districts are very similar." And that was my first introduction, true introduction to iReady. I can tell you that for a number of years as a high school principal, it was very frustrating for me because we, at the high school level, had very little support to improve things like end-of-course scores. They, you know, it's this nebulous thing, and then there wasn't a whole lot out there. And while iReady, I will be honest, doesn't have everything for K-12 that it has for K-8, it does offer the high school a little bit of it. And actually, in my interview, it's one of the things I mentioned even before my situation at I-3, is that I thought we needed to explore as a district. So, Dr. Atkinson has allowed us to do that. We've met with principals and assistant principals and instructional coaches and have decided that we want to move this direction for next year. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of a presentation tonight, but y'all be easy with me on the questions because I'm still learning as well, and I'll be the first to admit it. So, go ahead. I have a clicker, never mind. I'll go ahead. So, Assessment for the Purpose of Instruction. One of the things that has frustrated me, again, as an educator for a number of years about MAP, is while MAP gives us really good information, it really is sort of in isolation as to how it relates to the instructional process. So, with iReady, the package that we're going to have is going to give us a little more options so that we can connect the instructions, the instruction more to the assessment. And if you will look over on the right side, you're going to see we can do growth monitoring, literacy assessments, and even a dyslexia screener. And then, on the left side, it also offers us support for our Spanish-speaking students as well so that we could have some alleviating a little bit of the burden for them and their teachers. So, again, we're going to assess with purpose. Why do we need to assess? We need to assess so that we know where the gaps are so that our teachers can bridge those gaps for our kids. And iReady is going to give us a diagnostic so that we're going to take these tests and it'll identify for each student where the gaps are. Now, MAP can do that, but the difference with iReady is it's going to give us support to move forward with that. So, these are the packages that's all part of it. It's a huge, huge deal. It also supports the work we're doing with letters. There's a lot of phonics support. And if you look, it even says phonics for 312. That's pretty unusual. So, we're going to have support for those high school teachers, for those students who really sometimes struggle with reading, and their teachers who have not had formal how-to-teach-a-child-to-read training. So, good support for them. All right, I couldn't figure, the video I want to share with you was a little bit hard to get into the thing because it was on the iReady thing. So, Tim is going to show you the video. But before he starts it, I have heard you say many times, "When we report our test scores, we're growing, but we're not making up over a year at a time, so we're always still behind." The best thing to me about iReady is it allows us to have stretch goals for kids so that kids can have the actual framework to help them develop maybe a year and a half at a time. And if we do that, we can catch up. And this little video does a good job of explaining those stretch goals. So, I just want to show you this. It's about four minutes, but I think it's worth the time.
In classrooms across the nation, there are students who are not proficient in grade-level work. How can we change this? We can start by giving every student individualized, attainable, and challenging goals so that they can grow toward grade-level proficiency. iReady's Diagnostic Growth Model does just this. Students need growth goals that consider both their current needs and give each learner an ambitious target to work toward. The premise of our growth model is that while every student may start in a different place, every child can work toward grade-level proficiency. Our model uses two benchmarks. Typical growth, which is the average growth of students at each placement level, and stretch growth, which is how much we want each student to grow to put them on a path towards proficiency. In each classroom, there are many students with unique strengths and areas of need. In one classroom, there could be 17 students who are two or more grade levels below, six students one grade level below, and still two students on grade level. Each of these students needs goals that are challenging but attainable. With our growth model, the students in this classroom have different targets. Let's talk about typical growth. For our students who begin the year at a placement of mid, late, or above grade level on the iReady diagnostic, we expect to see growth of 21 points, 25 points for students who have a placement of early on-grade level, 26 points for students with a placement of one grade level below, 27 points for students at two grade levels below, and 30 points for students who start the year with a placement of three or more levels below. Now, let's discuss stretch growth. Think about stretch growth targets as being rigorous yet attainable. For our students who begin the year at mid, late, or above level, 30 points. For students who are early on-grade, 34 points. 35 points for students who are one grade level below. 43 points for students who are two grade levels below. And 55 points for students who start the year three or more grade levels below. Now, let's dive even deeper. Alejandro and Nia both start the year two grade levels below. We know both students are capable of growing. However, if Alejandro continues to make typical growth, he may not grow enough to meet on-grade level standards. He will move in the right direction, but it will not be enough to get him where he needs to be. Nia has met her stretch growth goal for one year. She is still one grade level below, but she has made a lot of progress. When she meets her stretch growth goal the following year, she will have grown enough to be on-grade level. But Alejandro and Nia both deserve goals that put them on a path to proficiency. That's why we think growth targets can be a tool for equity. Students may take different paths and have different needs to get to grade-level work, but we believe all students deserve high standards and attainable goals. Not every goal will get every student to proficiency in a year. Some targets put students on a multi-year path to proficiency. This is by design. Let's take a look at a third-grade student, Maya. She takes her fall diagnostic and scores a 409, placing her two grade levels below. Her typical growth, or what we'd expect from the average student at this placement, is 27 points. Her ambitious stretch growth target is 43 points. Even if she hits the stretch growth target of 43 points for a third grader, she won't quite be at mid-on level. Her path to proficiency is designed to take more than a year. But if she hits that stretch growth target of 43 points, she'll be well on her way. That's the iReady Growth Model. It's based on research from the millions of students who have taken iReady diagnostic assessments. By differentiating the goals based on each student's iReady placement, we can provide typical and stretch growth targets that are reasonable, challenging, and attainable. Some students will reach their goals before others, but all students will be moving in the right direction. Every learner deserves a chance to chart their path towards success. The iReady Growth Model provides educators and students with the tools to do just that.
Another reason that I really think this is a good move for us is because it aligns so well with what we've done with personalized learning. It takes each student where they are and then pushes them forward. So, that was a better explanation, I think, than I could do about the stretch goal. But I hope that that answered some of your questions. But another issue that I wanted to bring out too is that it really, the teacher can use this. And again, y'all know, we talked about textbooks. This is a tool. The teacher is still in charge of the classroom. And how the teacher chooses to use it to meet the needs of his or her students is still what we do. This is just one more tool. But I think particularly for our young teachers, it's going to give them some supports of how to reach those needs for those kids, where they can tailor instruction. They can use it as much or as little as they need. But one of the things that we do in our district, which is just sound best practice, is pull small groups, small groups with targeted gaps in their learning. And this will give, they can give a diagnostic on a particular standards or group of standards, two, three, whatever it is they're working on. And it will sort those kids into those groups for them. Where now, the teacher is having to design a test, give the test or the assessment. The teacher then has to grade that and then sort them. So, this will take that work from the teacher, that they can pull these things and have those flexible small groups that they're already using without all the prep time that it takes to get to those. And then, it'll also tell them where the gaps are in the learning. And then, how the teacher chooses to address those gaps is, of course, left up to professional judgment. So, lots of teacher toolbox pieces, lots of things to support. And I'm just going to skip through. These are just little assessments. It'll do progress monitoring. Again, our teachers are currently doing this on their own. So, this is a tool that'll help them do it as often as they wish. And there's one more slide I really want to get to that this is the part that I really like. I think we do so many things in isolation that don't serve each other in education. I'm not sure if we don't do that in the whole world. But this really brings together the planning for instruction, the assessment and the use of data, and the engagement of the kids and the teacher. And our hope is that this will grow our students, help grow our students, give teachers the tools that they need. But I think it'll also take a lot of the clerical side of their job, you know, reduce those requirements as well. So, that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Tell me when to get there. Okay. And again, that's just the average student growth. Right. And reading and math. But again, it's just about designing for those individual kids. And, you know, still having recovered from COVID, I think our disparities among the class, in the classroom now is even greater. So, this is just hopefully going to be a tool. It's going to come with lots of professional development for our assistant principals and instructional coaches who are then going to train their staffs. Anything else?
I noticed on one screen, it said, it was just naming the parts of the program, and it said mathematics for the classroom. Does that mean the mathematics help section part?
Yes.
Okay. Because isn't there a math program that goes with this too?
Well, they have that. And like, a lot of our math teachers now are using Alex, which is a software that we won't be, we won't need anymore because this will do it for it. But it just will provide them additional practice and supports. And teachers can pull things from that to use in the classroom if they choose to. That's why I said, I think it'll be great for our newer teachers who have less tools in their box, you know?
I thought, I might be wrong, but I thought there was a true math-like textbook and program that, like, an adoption that went with this that you could use.
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, not that I'm aware of. But over half the state has now shifted to iReady just because it does everything MAP does, but it also gives teachers supports that we didn't have before. I agree, I agree. And just the flexible small group piece, you know, that takes time, a lot of time.
You know, as we've looked at this and Sonia's met with different groups throughout the district, I've tried to stay out of this completely and not bias anyone because I am a proponent of iReady. As the Chief Instructional Officer, I used it for four years. And I was an early adopter of MAP. And I was on the original group that got iReady, did the, helped do the research so that it could be added to the formative assessment. And that, you know, I was a MAP disciple. I don't know, that's not the right word. But I believed in MAP when it first came out as an early adopter. But it did not keep up. And this is much better as far as the work it puts on teachers. You know, if a teacher does not have the time to actually utilize MAP, it's worthless.
Right.
They don't have to invest as much time in this for students to get benefit. And, you know, and over the years that I, in my previous district, I saw growth at a higher rate than we were getting on MAP.
That's what we need.
But like I said, I've tried not to, you know, I've not told anybody that I had, you know, had been on the early stages of iReady because I didn't want them to be biased. I want them to come to the conclusion themselves. But I do believe it's a much better product.
And I would say, to sum up my beginning story, my friend is in a very small rural school district where there was a booming mill in, you know, the early 90s that closed. So, you know, it sounds all kind of familiar. And they've seen really, really positive results, especially with their most struggling learners. But also, she says that she's seen great results with those higher-achieving students that sometimes we don't stretch as much as we should as well. So, I'm excited about it.
I do realize, I do know that we could, you know, teachers could look at all those math, the MAPs reports, but then you have to go through, like you say.
Yeah, you had to go back through the learning continuum. You had to cross-reference everything. And I mean, it was just too.
It was great for a looksee, but that's kind of where we stopped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for looking out for more tools.
Thank you for looking out for more tools for us. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move on to items 6.0, the action items, and 6.1, the first reading approval of our Lexington School District III 2025-2026 school calendar. Ms. Mackenzie Taylor, and it's hard to believe it's time to start.
I know. I was going to, I was going to say, Ms. Bryant and I are excited to be here this evening to talk about the 2025-2026 calendar. And it seems like we were just here doing this because we were. But we have realized that many of our Panther families are trying very hard to plan things way far in advance, trips and other activities. And so we're working hard to make sure we get these calendars out to them in a timely fashion. And we feel like we will be better serving them by providing the calendars two years in advance. You all received a copy of the proposed 2025-2026 calendar in your board packets. And I would like to note that this calendar is very similar to the calendar that we are currently using in Lexington III. It's very similar to the calendar that you all approved for next school year as well. It has been vetted by the Lexington III Teacher Forum and given their stamp of approval as well as our school principals. It also meets the South Carolina Code of Law requirements that say our school term must be 190 days with 180 of those being instruction-based. The calendar covers nine months. School districts are traditionally not supposed to start until the third Monday in August, but because we are proposing a modified calendar, we can slide past that rule. And also, as part of the calendar, there must be 10 staff professional development days built in as well as three school bad weather makeup days. So without further ado, we will dive right into it. Teachers will have around six weeks of summer break at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year before they come back for this calendar on Monday, July the 21st. And we have padded the front part of the school year with a lot of professional development and teacher workdays because we want to give our staff members the opportunity to get into their classrooms, get those ready for kids to come into the doors, as well as offer them some professional development opportunities. So we have professional development and teacher workday set aside from July 21st through the 28th. We plan to have our Meet the Teacher event on Thursday, July 24th. And of course, that's when our students and our parents come in, they meet with their teachers. Our students are able to determine where their classrooms are located so they don't feel nervous about the first day of school. They can drop off school supplies, et cetera. So we just want to have that event to make sure that our students feel prepared. And then, of course, we have our first day of school slated for July the 29th. And then we'll move into the month of August, and it's pretty much normal. We do have a professional development and teacher workday scheduled for August the 29th. And you might think, wow, that's really soon at the beginning of the school year to have one of those. But we have that placed there at the request of our principals because they want this day to really have the opportunity to look at where their students are academically at that moment in time and be able to start making plans for the enrichment week that is forthcoming in September so that they can determine which students might need academic support so that we can provide that to them sooner in the semester. We're closed on Monday, September the 1st for the Labor Day holiday. And then our enrichment week will run from September the 22nd through the 25th. And again, this week is set aside for our students who need it to receive additional support through our academic camps. We also have our really fun enrichment camps. And like Dr. Atkinson said, we had 292 kids just a few weeks ago at our schools participating in a wide array of really fun things. I was jealous of them over with the metal detecting camp. But we have, we have received rave reviews from our kids and our parents alike. So we have those opportunities planned for then as well. We're closed on September the 26th, and then our fall break will run from September the 29th through October the 3rd. We have a bad weather makeup day scheduled for November the 25th, and that is the first of three bad weather days that are scheduled throughout the school year. And if you remember in the past, we have typically had that whole week off throughout the week of Thanksgiving. But at the request of our teachers, we did add a day back in there. They told us that they would rather work since we have so many other breaks built into our modified calendar. So we have one day there that week, and then we have a bad weather makeup day. And we still feel like this will allow families who may need to travel for the holiday to get a jump start before the traffic. Students will go for a half-day on December the 19th. And then our winter break is a full two weeks, starting on December the 22nd and running through January the 2nd. And from here, I will turn it over to Ms. Bryant to talk about our second semester. But I would like to point out that our first semester is composed of 88 days, and our second semester is composed of 92 days. So that's one of the benefits of our modified calendar is we're able to squeeze more school days into that first semester and make them more balanced academically.
Okay, so January 5th, teachers will return for a professional workday. And then first day of second semester will begin on January 6th for students. We, of course, will observe the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday on January 19th. And then February 13th will be a professional development/teacher workday with a bad weather makeup day on February 16th. It was backwards this year on the calendar, and we felt that it would be better to flip that so that everybody's off on President's Day because a lot of businesses and families will want to do things during that time. Our spring enrichment will happen from March 30th to April 2nd. And then April 3rd, we actually have a holiday that day. And spring break will be April 6th through 10. Then we, of course, cannot have a Batesburg-Leeceville calendar without our makeup day for poultry festival. I call that poultry festival fest day. That is May 8th. And then May 25th, we'll, of course, observe Memorial Day. Last day for students will be June 3rd. That is a half-day for them. And then faculty and staff will finish up on the 4th for their last professional development teacher workday. Do you all have questions about any of this?
Do we have an idea of graduation date at this point, or is that too early?
We don't at this point.
Any other questions?
Quite a puzzle.
It really is a puzzle.
You move one thing, you got to move another.
And you have to trade green for green. You can't mix your colors.
We try.
It's not like construction at the primary school.
All right. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to get first reading approval of the Lexington County School District III 2025-2026 school calendar as presented.
We have a motion from Mr. Kaufman for first reading approval of the Lexington County School District III 2025-2026 school calendar as presented by the administration. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second with Ms. Bontmike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move to executive session.
We have a motion from Ms. Carey to move into executive session for purpose.
Personnel matters.
For a discussion of.
As stated on the agenda.
Personnel matters. Do I have a second? Second with Dr. Gunner. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session.